So this meeting is being convened by video conference and compliance with Governor Cuomo's executive orders, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal boards to convene meetings via video conference without in-person attendance by the public. In addition, the public has been provided with ability to view, hear, and participate in the meeting. A transcript will be provided at a later date. We're kind of lied about the participate, you can watch, but not really participate, it's a work session. There is a quorum of the board members for the meeting, so we'll call the meeting to order. The link to the live stream of the meeting has been provided to the public, and a video of the meeting will be made available on public access television, as well as a link on the town's website. There are really no submission materials, there is an agenda. This is the only thing that we're talking about this evening, is a work session, our continued conversation on the proposed form-based code. So we'll call the meeting to order again, sorry, we'll do it again. And we have some drafts, thank you very much, Felicia, for putting together these drafts, assembling some very different writings from various sources. Thank you for assembling this. And so I'd like to see how close we can get to marking this up, wordsmithing, changing policy, et cetera, substantive issues. And perhaps we can get pretty close, if not to the finish line this evening, to put together a memo for the town board on form-based code. That would be the goal, we'll see what we can do. Anyway, so anyway, thank you again, Felicia, for putting this together. Let's go through this, so we start right from the beginning, which again was an attempt to put together an introduction to assimilate Eldad's bullets, which I thought was a great addition, to kind of summarize, in executive summary fashion, where we are. And so why don't we go from there? Open it up and just, any comments, questions, issues, I mean, broad issues? I mean, in terms of what do people think in terms of the overall feel of this introduction? Yeah, sure, Eldad.
I have some thoughts exactly to that point about overall feel. And but before that, I just want to make sure that we're on literally the same page, that we're kind of talking about the same document. Are we talking about the document that basically is, has, it says clean copy of Tom's comments on top? Is that, is that?
Yes, yeah, that's the latest version, I think.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're talking to the same thing.
Yes, that would always help, yes, good point.
I think part of my question is, there was a whole bunch of stuff we wrote on the housing section. I don't see it in here, was it ever brought in here? Because I think when I look at all the, when I look at all the comments or the additions, I feel like Tom has just added stuff, but there isn't anything from what we had written and I had written before and submitted.
So if I can respond to that, I did, I took a crack at editing. Everybody has the opportunity to take a crack at editing, I took a crack at it. And but I did it and tracked changes, so any editing I did still appeared in the document in the margins.
Yeah, but I didn't see any of the comments.
So folks, let me interrupt for a second, okay? From the last time we talked about this, we had asked for all comments based on, you know, whatever working draft was out there, and we received comments from Tom and Bob Kirkwood. So Canaan, you may, you and, I don't know which housing comments you're referring.
I think we had read it, and it was, it was something we talked about bringing into the document. So it was the previous document, and you said you would bring it in, or somebody said here that we'll bring it in and we'll do it. So I thought it was available to everybody.
We said we would bring it in, we would.
But I don't see it in at all, so.
Can I just answer you? We said that we would bring it in, right? We'd bring everybody's comments in, everybody's contributions in. And then everybody would have a chance to edit the document through track changes.
Okay.
And so this is not the official document coming out of the board. These, this is only my editing of, and nobody else that I can see, except for maybe Bob Kirkwood, nobody else decided to take the document and do any editing. So this is the standing document we have right now, edited only by me. And if there are further edits that people want to make, then that's fine.
I understand editing it, because then you'd be able to track that there were, there were things that we had added to the housing section that's there. It's not like it's, it's almost like you had to start from scratch, that's what I'm worried about here.
Well, first of all, the, the, if you're asking about my, my particular edits, then yeah, I did, and I, and I thought that I explained in, I think it was an email that, when I sent it, my edits in, I made the, in the email that I attached it to, spoke specifically to your writing. And it, and my observation was that it was, first of all, that the tone of the writing was, was, I just thought that it was way, way too aggressive. It read like, like a manifesto, right? We must do this.
I don't want to get into the architectural, I mean, to the style of writing, definitely.
But that's part of the editing, you understand that? So the other part, and that's an important part of the, not necessarily the style, but the tone. The other editing that I did was, had to do, and we had conversations about this. We've done many conversations about this. The other editing I did was to try and, and find a way to, to come to a, some sort of a compromise between the strong desire to promote affordable housing and to put on the town board's to-do list, an aggressive sort of affordable housing policy. And on the one hand, and on the other hand, to address what the form-based code, how the form-based code should deal, the form-based code itself should deal with, with affordable housing in the context of the existing town policy. And to suggest that the town policy, the town should consider expanding and investigating its policies, the town should consider investigating its policies on affordable housing as they go forward. But I don't think, and I thought we talked, and you may not agree with this, which is fine, but I think that my feeling was, and some other members of the board, I think as well, feel that this is not the place, this is not the document, this is not, this is not the venue right now to try and change the town board's policy on affordable housing and lay that on top of the form-based code initiative. Because that was never the intention of the form-based code to begin with. It wasn't going to be ignoring affordable housing, it was going to refer to the affordable housing policies that exist within the state, within the county, I guess, within the federal government, and within the town code already.
No, and I, I don't have any particular sort of, look, the, first of all, I've always said that I have a problem with calling anything affordable housing, because it actually means completely different things to completely different, to every person, right? So that it is, it is a financial structure to be able to bring in housing that is, that is available to different income groups. But I feel like the couple of things, and so I'm okay with not, not having what we had talked about, and I really have no problem with that. I think the, the version that I'm seeing now talks about different housing types, and then it sort of talks about the success of the Cupola building. But it doesn't really, I mean, that, that to me seems like a very, you know, it doesn't lay out what about the success? Like what parts of the Cupola building's success are we trying to talk about here? Is it the density, is it the unit mix, is it the income mix, is it? I mean, it's a landmark building, so how are we going to build something else? How are we going to live up and emulate that building to bring in any sort of housing that is going to be a mixed income, mixed, mixed housing type?
I, I, I understand, I understand. First of all, you know, forgive me for affordable housing, but I think for the moment, that's a term of art we're all going to have to use, because it's a term of art that's used out there and is being used in town and in the public. So it'll just have to do, unless we want to take on the responsibility to educate all those people about all the.
But we're not even using the word affordable, and I didn't think I saw that anywhere in that.
So, so the, the, the example of the Cupola building, you're right, it was a very specific example. And the reason that it shines, I think, so brightly has to do, I think, with the architecture and the prominence of the building and, and all those things. And it, I don't know if you had a chance to visit it, but we got a tour after they had opened it, before they had populated it, and I'm telling you, it's just a wonderful project now.
No, I.
Now, I'm sorry, let me finish. Now, I understand that that's not every, every project can't be like that, and it might be the wrong one to use as a model, and it doesn't really say anything about the problem and the way the problem could be solved.
Exactly.
But it is not, this, this is, it is, it is not the purpose of the form-based code to, to educate the public and to, to promote and put forward a new form-based policy of, sorry, a new, I don't know what you want to call it, I'm going to use affordable housing, I think we know, both, all know, I think, a new affordable housing policy for the town. This, this is not, this should not be a treatise on affordable housing, it shouldn't be a treatise on, on wastewater treatment, it shouldn't be a treatise on, you know, and any one of the issues that are out there that people might be concerned about. It's supposed to be a, a, a response to, is the way I see it, it's supposed to be a response to a proposed legislation of which form-based, form-based, I'm sorry, affordable housing is a component. So I, so I tried to, to condense everything down and to, to put it out there that this is an issue, that this is a planning board believes that this is an issue that should be addressed, and that, and that whatever is appropriate to be done on form-based, I'm sorry, on affordable housing within the build-out of the hamlet, that that should be, should be done and addressed. And, and if, if, this is what I think, I think there is absolutely no problem. And that any one of us should feel free to write a, their own, you know, paragraph or paragraphs on any particular subject as their own response to the form-based code. And if you feel strongly about all of these things, you should feel free to do it, and we can put paragraphs in by, by specific board members and cite them as the authors of that, and that's how they feel about it, and that's fine. I have no problem with that, I don't, I don't think the rest of the board.
And I, I don't, I don't mean to be, the, the reason why I'm bringing it up is a couple of things, right? I think the way we sort of broke down these topics and talked about housing in particular is, you know, and I think we agreed on a lot of things that, you know, there needs to be due process, we need to be part of the due process, the boards need to be part of the due process, we don't want to take that out of, out of the code. We also, we also want to have, give the flexibility for architectural style, we also want to explore different types of housing units. I think where I'm sort of struggling is this sort of ideal comparison with the Cupola building. And I'll tell you why, because you're, you're setting up this ideal without really, we're not specifying what about it works, right? It's very ambiguous, and I would like to define it better. It's a wonderful building, I happen to know somebody who lives there. And it's, you know, to me, it's great, but it's almost not achievable in any other parcel of land anywhere else in this town.
Well, I, I, I agree with, I think that's, that's a good topic, I think that's a good subject. I don't, I think I disagree with the last sentence, but I agree with everything else you said in terms, I think we should be more explicit in explaining why the Cupola building is an example. I think we've talked about it, we just need to enhance it here, it seems to me. And it is, to me, it's not an example of architecture, it's an example of housing in terms of how it works and how it is seamless from the exterior and interior, and we talked about this at length. So I think that's a good point, but I think it can be replicated, I think it should be replicated wherever we have housing, wherever we develop it, frankly, not just in the hamlet, but throughout the town with any kind of larger initiatives. So I think that's, those are, I think those good points, we can expand that. My take on the housing was, my takeaway on the housing, maybe it was just my perspective was, and I think this attempts to do it was to, my takeaway on it was that we wanted to emphasize, and I thought we had some very interesting conversations about different kinds of, of work, housing models, you know, work, you know, this kind of stuff. And I just, I thought the takeaway from us would be to the town board was to recommend that the consultants view here, what they have laid out was too narrow. And what the town board ought to instruct the consultants to do is to expand that vision to look at all different kinds of, of housing. And Canaan, I, I go back to what you said so early on, and very often, I thought was, was absolutely correct. It should be an absolute blend, I don't know what the right blend is, but it should be a blend, left to developers, market, owned, rentals, maybe two-bedroom, one-bedroom, a whole mix, and then you'll get some real dynamic living here, and we get some, from what you've explained to me as an expert in housing, that's how it really works and how it works best. So I was very much impressed with that, and that's my takeaway on housing, and that includes affordable housing as well, as, as one of the ingredients in this whole mix. So I think, you know, I think we're close on this, I, I think we could add that, and I think we could explain a little bit more on the Cupola building, why we're citing it, it's not architecture, not because it's a landmark, it's because the way it was modeled in terms of the mix by floor, by door, no one knows by looking at any place, whether your parking space is not preferred, your entrance is not different, your door doesn't look different, your access to the play area is not any different, it is absolutely seamless, and that's the way it should work. And I think in distinction with some other examples we have in town that I'm not going to mention, because I'll get yelled at again. So, so we, I, I think that's what, that was critical, and that was, I think, I think that's, I think the main takeaway. I, I am uncomfortable with making, trying to articulate a change in affordable housing, not only just for the hamlet with Old Town, if we're going to do it, I think it should be town-wide in this document, because I think we have so many things layered in this form-based code now that we don't need to throw another concrete block onto some of these, some of these issues.
Sure.
But I, I think to the extent we can capture that feel, would you agree with that? I mean, that, because that's what you kept talking about, which I thought was so compelling. It's the breadth of the housing, the options that are available.
It's the, it's the inter, it's the, it's the mix of incomes that the housing accommodates. There are laws in place regarding the look and feel of affordable housing next to market rate housing and so on and so forth. But really, what is the claim to fame, if you will, for the Cupola housing? Is the mix, it is the, the thorough mixing, it's not a by-floor mixing, it is completely integrated mixed-income housing, and that is, that is what it is heralded for.
And, and just to give an example, one of the people I know there is a teacher in our schools, right? And right there, this whole conversation about being able to live, live and work in, in, in the sort of same sort of region, that is the promise that even, you know, all the housing conversations around New York City are, where you're saying, can we have our nurses and our, our teachers and others live in the same place that they work? And that's the promise, I agree with what Serena just said, and then the fact that it's so well-integrated.
Well, there is, there, there, I don't think that there is anything that I'm aware of, or anybody that I'm aware of, who is involved in housing these days, or who is involved in, in the approval of housing, that has affordable housing in it, that doesn't understand those things, or will understand them very, very quickly by, in the process of approving, approving projects that have these sorts of units in it. It's built into the industry, it's built into the, it's built into the codes, it's built into the standards and the criteria that have to, unless I'm mistaken, that have to.
It's not, it is not.
Okay, okay, so, all right, okay, fine, so.
Let me just say, it is important to reflect in your communications, the true intermixing.
Okay, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, I, I, that's fine, that's fine. But I guess what I'm, okay, so I'm learning that that's not the case. I was under the assumption that, that, you know, all of the forces were brought to bear if there's affordable housing, that it would be the following criteria, otherwise there's no subsidy available. All right, if that's not, if that's not the case, that's fine, I need to learn about these things. But my point is, this is not the place in this document to educate people on those things. This is not the responsibility of the form-based code to educate people on the details of that issue.
I guess my point is then putting the Cupola building as, citing the Cupola building as it is an example to live up to, is sort of not, for what reason is not clear to me, and that's.
Take it out, well, no, take it, well, well, the reason was that it's one in our, in our town that, that, actually, I think it won an award, and people are happy about, but, no, that's okay, no, it's okay, it's okay, I don't, I don't want to make an issue of Cupola, I don't care, take it out. I mean, I really don't care.
No, I would like to put it in and then, then sort of explain the fact that it's not really the architectural style, it's like Bob said, it's about, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can.
He said it was your architectural style, I didn't, it was your architectural style.
We, we can, we can, I think we can tweak it, I think we're on to it here with this, this, this section, as far as I'm concerned, and I think we can tweak it and explain better. Getting back to the other issue, but there are limitations, I think there are limitations also with the Cupola building, and we might want to point that out. Remember the other issue there, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my, again, my sense of the takeaway on the housing and the hamlet was a complete mix. And that means even fee simple, somewhere in their ownership, maybe condoms, or I don't co-op, or whatever. But, so, I mean, obviously, the Cupola building is only rental, if that's what we want to say, that's fine. But again, I, I would, I would think that the form-based code, since it's going to be a roadmap for developers in the town for, you know, approvals and getting people on the map and getting them to come here and getting them to invest, we would want it to be as broad as possible and just enumerate, by the way, it's rentals, it could be a mix of rentals, it could be, I mean, I find nothing wrong at all, I think it's fantastic, the development there in town, though, you know, 149, the condoms, those ownership ones. So a mix, I think, is the way to go, but.
I, I, I agree, a mix is the way to go, I'll just say again that, you know, if, if, if we were, if we were dealing with, if we were dealing with the subject of drainage, for example, we need to be sure that for the sake of the environment, we are providing proper stormwater drainage with all the filtration, which is, right? If, 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 and then in order to be sure everybody understood that, we go into the science of different filtration techniques and different ways to pond and the different ways to retain. That's the equivalent, it seems to me, of going into the, the nuances of, of this sort of, of affordable housing, I'm just going to use that term because it's the only one I know, affordable housing, it's just inappropriate. So I, I'm not, I have no problem with the issue, I just don't think it belongs in here. And again, if we have to, if we're going to cite the Cupola building and say, well, we think it's a good example, and we're going to say why it's a good example, and then we're going to say, but here's why it's not a good example, I don't understand what the, what, what that, what that commentary is doing in this document. It, it doesn't belong in this document, that's, but if, if people want to put it in, that's fine, I just think it's extraneous.
The, the one other point I wanted to bring up was, you know, we talk about bringing in experts. We say there are experts available for consultation to the town board, could engage to explore financial constructs that would make such housing feasible in the hamlet. I think.
Is that in the beginning, Canaan, where was that?
It's, yeah, it's the second paragraph where we.
Okay, I got it, okay.
So my, my only other point there is, I think part of what we, I was hearing was that this, this particular instance, the town board had brought in experts, but probably not gone through the right processes. We did not land up, they were somehow put in a bad spot by people who were not informing them correctly. So either we have to be very, very precise about saying, here are some, here are some expert, you know, here are some opinions, or here's the experts you can talk to, or here are some of the citations, or we are all just spouting opinions here, right? Like my, the difficulty I'm having here is either we guide them, if this is meant to guide them, then we have to put more detail in there, or we need to, you know, what we are basically saying is, your previous experts did not do the job, there are experts, but we're not calling out anybody, that is my other sort of reading from here, I'm not trying to be critical at all, I'm just trying to be, have, have a very open conversation around.
No, that's fine, that's fine, so when you say, when you say, just saying there are experts, when you say we need to give more information, what, what are you thinking?
So I'm thinking, either we need to sort of give examples, and again, I know you don't think it is important to give these kind of details, but I feel like this is something, the, housing is a big component of the current form-based code, which people did not like. So I think we need to be more prescriptive in how we give them information, whatever it is we want to give. And like I said, I, I am not, I'm not of the opinion that there should be X amount of housing that's affordable or not, but I just feel like it, it is our job, is it our job to be informing the town board? Like if this document is meant to tell them, here's a better way, or here's a, here's a starting of a roadmap for you to go at, which is what I was hearing before, then we need to be a little more prescriptive, you know?
Okay, so I'm asking, let's get back to the text, just so we can move on, how would you, when you say there are experts, I mean, we need to be more.
Yeah, I think we should, I think we have to either provide them some sort of idea of who are these experts that we.
When you say who, you mean names, you mean names?
Not necessarily names, but if, again, if the policy, because when I read this.
Just what's the text, what would it be, what kind of experts do you want to have in here?
Well, I.
What are the modifiers, I have no problem, let's just get on with it. What are the modifiers that should, that should go before experts, are they?
I think, I think the broad, the broad observation might be that, this is my take, and I think it's in both housing as well as Balkan Heights, my takeaway on this was that there was insufficient financial, economic information supplied by the consultants to lead them to their, their conclusion, that the, their recommendation is the four and five-story structures. So I don't know who would figure that out, but I think our, I think it's a very fair observation to make that kind of an observation, which is just tweaking this around a little bit, and, and just saying.
There are experts available.
Is there somebody who is, who is marking this up, are you expecting Felicia to be marking this up as you're discussing?
We're having a conversation right now, Sabrina.
I understand, I just want to make sure that you're aware.
Well, no, we, we need to cut to the text before we mark it up. So we're trying to, right, so we're trying to figure out what that is. So the experts are available, if, if they are, I thought that I'd cover, I honestly, Canaan, I honestly thought that I got the essence of what you were looking for, by, first of all, I think the housing types that I put in here were right out of your text.
Yes.
And then I'm trying to recognize the fact that this is a nuanced subject that requires a lot of exploration and a lot of examination, and it has not been done in the context of the form-based code, it's just been left off the table. And that's why I put in this paragraph, there are experts available for them to engage, to put, to, to analyze this, and that in fact, the North Greeley area could be used as a test case.
I, I like all of that, Tom, I'm just wondering if it makes sense to further elaborate as to what it is that we, we hold, you know, what do we think that the current experts have not done, right? And I think that's what Bob just touched on, and I, I'm not saying we name people, but either we tell them what's not been done in the current case, so that they cover for it all forward.
Okay, good, so I guess we're not going to come to any final text in this, but if you want to take that on, or somebody wants to take that on to expand it, to make it more robust, right?
Yeah, and again, you know, the whole idea is if we are, I like the idea of mentioning the Cupola building and mentioning the fact that, I understand what you're saying, that it's nuts and bolts, but it's also policy, right? I mean, it's one thing to say, this is how you build it, but it's another thing to say, well, on, at a policy level, the Cupola building works because they got so much right in terms of the mixes, a mix of incomes and a mix of units and all of that. So that's what I would like to touch on, as far as that example is concerned.
Good, have at it, very good.
Thank you.
So I'm, just getting back to, so, I mean, it sounds like, Canaan, you'll make some edits to the housing section that we can all take a look at. You know, I mean, I think truthfully, not that I want to get into this topic, but if we were working all off of the same, you know, Google Doc, it would be a lot easier to, to have this kind of, no, I understand, I understand, Sabrina, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying.
We tried that, folks.
Yeah, that didn't work.
We tried it, it did not work.
No, I understand.
I do wish it worked.
Track, track changes has worked for years. Track track changes has worked for years.
So, but but Bob, getting back to your original question, um, as far as like, um. The tone and feel of of the document. I don't love it.
Do you want to talk about the whole document, or I was hoping that maybe the first page, you know?
The first page, the first page is is what I'm talking about, because that's kind of like, um. Again, I mean, maybe the further we go down the these discussions, the further we will like drift from each other. On some of these topics. Um, but to me. Um, I think I've I've tried to make the point of of what's important to me over the last couple of meetings. Specifically that we come out as a board, it would be nice for, from my perspective, if we came out as a board in favor of the concept. Uh, in general, of the form-based code, that doesn't, uh, that's not here, and that's fine if that's what's intended. But that was, um, that's not here. There's no positivity about the concept of, uh, upzoning and. Revitalizing the downtown of our town in any way. Um, so that, to me, that's missing. And, uh, previously, Tom, you suggested, and tonight you also suggested to Connor that, you know. If we can all reach a consensus, obviously, that's that's understandable and fine. I mean, there could be some sort of side. Or or parallel, um, you know, recommendations or comments submitted. I'm curious, uh. You know, what we think of that. Uh, I mean, you know, there's no. Well, I wonder, I mean, is there any like legal guidance associated with that? Any issues with doing something like that?
No, this is not, uh, even in an application, it's perfectly okay for somebody to vote no or to abstain. So, and this isn't even an application. There's no review authority here. This is just our opinion as a board. And I think that we can have five opinions or one opinion or ten opinions. I don't think that really, I don't think there's any legal consequence to that.
What 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 I've done in the past, um, I I don't recall if we've done it with this board, but with other boards, what I've done is. If there's no consensus, if there's no majority surrounding one opinion, or even if there is. A majority of the board that agrees with a particular opinion, but the remaining board members have strong, you know, sort of dissenting opinions or different opinions. All can be reflected in the document just by saying, you know, a majority of the board thinks this. Another member thinks Y, and the third member, you know, another member, a group of members thinks Z. Just so that all all opinions are reflected, um, but the majority, if there is one, is noted as such.
I I think that's fair, and I think it would be also fair to say, if if this applies, that, you know, uh, one member thought very strongly. Differently. I mean, just so that it's it's, you know, the conversation, the tone and nature of our conversation is also conveyed. I I'll take the blame on on the hit on that field, and I'll tell you why. When I was working through this. I I think, Eldad, you had a comment in there that we, you know, were in in general were in favor of this, and it just needs a little bit of tweaking. So then I reflected and said, well, forty, fifty percent of this document deals with architectural details. And we basically said those are overly prescribed, prescribed, they're not prescribed. And, um, and and so therefore, we were basically saying we didn't like that. ARB also said that. I saw that from the minutes. Then we we, at least the majority of us, thought that the process that was being proposed was, um, inappropriate. We disagreed with that. And then we talked about, uh, you know, the nuances and what to do about town-owned property and bulk and height. By the time you finished, um, it's not that we're against the form-based code, is that. From my view, unnecessarily, the form-based code was loaded up with other things that are extraneous to a zoning change. That were destined to cause problems. But I can tell you that during, I mean, I was, you know, I was in the minority on the committee. And, um, my opinions were never reflected as a minority opinion in the document. But I can tell you that we repeatedly, Tom and I repeatedly pointed out issues that we thought were going to be troublesome. Uh, in incorporating in a form-based code. I think the form-based code is good. I think it is favorable. I think the things that it will do in terms of streetscapes and landscapes and setbacks and uniformity. Uh, are appropriate. I think that's exactly what you would want to see, uh, in a redeveloped area of a hamlet, as the hamlets redeveloped. Do I necessarily, uh, think that automatically, just because you do that, that it has to be four stories or five stories? Absolutely not. Do I think, and I asked this repeatedly of the attorney who was on that, uh, the committee with the consultants. Is it necessary to change your process? He said, absolutely not. You can keep it absolutely identical, the same one. Uh, is it necessary to designate the town-owned property upfront at this point? And look toward that as part of the solution. We understood, it was very clearly understood. That that could be, um, an ingredient and instrument that might really, um, accelerate the development process. But at what cost? And at what controversy? So when you have that kind of controversy, as far as I'm concerned, you have this kind of friction that's gonna cause a delay and and problems with the process. So I'll take the blame on it, because I really, by the time I finished, uh, I don't believe it just requires some tweaks. When when forty, fifty percent of the document is is overly prescribed in terms of architecture. When the process itself is something we objected to, and I think others have objected to, including town board members. Um, and so the other ingredients that were put in there unnecessarily, that that are not necessarily form-based code. Form-based code does not mean zoning, rezoning. I mean, that's, it's 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 a different way of zoning, but it doesn't mean upzone. So, um, if you if you, if you link all those necessarily. Without exploring what could be done, uh, at current levels of zoning, and I think that was one of the problems that we had with this, that the public had. So, uh, I thought it, I think it's still the way to go. I still think there's a lot of, uh, good that comes out of it. But we need to be far more careful in terms of what we load on it, and I think. We have an opportunity to help and work with the town board and look at this micro area. To see exactly what can happen with various alternatives, rather than just saying, well. And and we didn't say it, and the town board didn't say it. Let's remember this. The consultants prescribed this to the town board. And to that residence here, I'm not quite sure how they they came to these conclusions. I don't get it, but in any event, they came up with these kinds of conclusions. And, um, thought that this would be the best way to accelerate and and generate the kind of interest and vitality in in, well, I can't even say that. Because their recommendations are in conflict with their economic consultant, so I don't know how they came up with it. So I I think we can help. I think we should help. But I I I've said this many times, and I I can't say it enough. I think through a combination of of factors during this past year, COVID being the most the most important one. Normally, this kind of situation, there would have been joint meetings in the town board. We would have been able to hash it in public. And worked on this, and and maybe it would have been different. And I I feel badly that, uh, we were unable to, um. Lend perhaps that kind of guidance sooner, uh, to help. If if that is guidance, maybe it's not guidance, maybe it should be dismissed. I don't know. Everyone's opinion is different, but. I I really felt it was, uh, it needed more than tweaks, and it is not because it was bad. It's not because I'm against the form-based code. Uh, it's it's zoning. But it doesn't change your process, etc.
Eldad, if I if I can answer the question, probably, uh, in agreement with with Bob, of the the where I. Where I start is that it's, first of all, I think it's very, very important to remember that this is not. This is not the town boards, the the document in front of us is not the town boards. Document that they proposed to legislate. This is a draft document. And and in that respect. They adopted, I I'm, I'm not trying to be legalistic here, because. I can't be, because I probably don't know what I'm talking about, but in essence, they adopted it for public review, right? And it's in the process of public review right now, and it's in the process of their review. And their revision, uh, from what I understand, from the public meetings, they are looking at issues and thinking again about issues with regard to. The public review process. And with regard to building height, and who knows what else, uh, I don't know what else, but other aspects of of this draft document. That was given to them by the consultant, right? That, uh, we are responsible now to, uh, to review and and provide our comments to. So I I I think I'm in agreement with Bob about this, that it's not that I'm against a form-based code, right? I'm just, I'm just not certain that this draft of a this form-based code. Is the appropriate and, um, in in all respects and all important respects, the correct one for for the hamlet. And so if the language in our review comes out to be derogatory, we need to fix that. If it comes out to sound as though we are trying to be disruptive, we need to fix that. I I agree with Bob. I'm not against a form-based code, and I am absolutely supportive of the town board's effort to do something about the hamlet. And I think that this is a really, really good tool to get at that problem. It's just that, as as Bob has expressed in a number of ways, and we probably all could in our own way in certain areas, say. Like in the affordable housing part, say, you know, the document isn't right yet. And so I would, I would put it that I I think the 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 planning board. Is in complete support of the town board's initiative. And we are not against a form-based code and rezoning of the hamlet in order to achieve the goals of comprehensive plan. And our comments are meant to be supportive and helpful in that regard.
Well, so I I I I hear you both. I don't think that comes across in this document, what you just said, Tom.
Okay, good.
At least the way I read it. And I would also say that, you know. You, like. You know, oftentimes, I I don't think, um, that the the, um. What are the words I'm looking for? Um, I I I think that the critiques that we have, I think we, most of us agree with most of 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 the critiques. Of the proposed code, but I think the delivery method matters in this case. For for a number of reasons, um, you know. The the town board, uh, I don't envy any of them. You know, when it comes to this this issue, I mean, they they have dealt with a lot and a lot of abuse. And, um, I mean, obviously legitimate criticism is one thing, but they've dealt with a lot, and and I think that, um. It was brave to put forward even this as a concept. And I think this, when I say this as a concept, I mean, an attempt to, um. Rezone the hamlet, uh, upzone the hamlet, do it in a different style of zoning, the form-based, uh, style. And, um, to do it in order to better the town, um, uh, for the long term. Uh, so I. I support those concepts, right? I also support the diversity of housing. I support affordable housing. I support the increased density downtown. I support all many of these goals, the walkability. Um, and I I think that, um, that. The way that, um, some of our previous comments have gone. You know, like I've said before, I I totally support the our critique of the, uh, EIS, uh, document, the draft EIS. But, uh. You know, a lot of the comments we made there were taken as all of the, the planning board also doesn't support this. No one in the town supports this, and that's that's just not fair, right? I mean, I understand that we can't, uh. Necessarily protect ourselves against being taken out of context, but at the same time, uh, this is the document that we're going to be issuing. Addressing, um, the form-based code proposal, and. I would like it to be more positive, because I am more positive about the form-based code than this document reads. If that's not the consensus here, that's fine too, um, because I'd like it to be more positive. I and I think, um, the rest of this opening page, um, uh, on town-owned land. The, it says here that, you know, we should keep it in the EIS, but, uh, and then it's kind of. It doesn't really address, uh, keeping it in the, um, in the code. But later on, page five, we do say that we should keep it, that we think that it should be kept into the code, and so. I think we should mention that it'll certainly at least be consistent. And when it comes to the heightened bulk bullet point. I think we want to talk a little bit more about balance and how, uh, how we should. There should be priorities and things that are important to us as a board and as a town. And so, again, I I I do think that we can. I would like it to be more positive about the concept and to speak more about how, uh, this should be done. And that there, what follows after that is edits to, um, the specifics.
Oh, so you're suggesting, if I may, uh, Eldad, you're suggesting a, a, uh. A more positive, like preamble.
Yes.
To the document, which, um, which, which highlights the the positive benefits. Uh, of the form-based code, all of which we might not agree on, by the way, the form-based code, the way it's drafted right now, the consultant's document, the way it's drafted right now. To hit the highlights of why we think it's a good thing, and why we, uh, frankly, personally. Admire the town board for taking the heat the way they've taken it. Um, I think they've been, they've been entirely fair. And, um, and should get credit for that. I'm not sure that belongs in this document, but I think that that word ought to go out. And then get into the specifics of what those areas where we think it could be improved. Is that right?
Yeah, I that's that's, I think that's fair. Yeah.
Well, I would recommend, uh, as I listen to this, and and specifically, Eldad, when you made your comment about heightened bulk, you know, here are the bullet. I I I think I'm coming to the conclusion that we should highlight and emphasize the goals, what we're trying to do here. Which is the positive. And that this is an attempt to to make it there. I'm not quite sure that these these bullets really help. Why don't we just leave it to the explanation? Because if you're gonna start explaining that in heightened bulk, basically, you're gonna be just regurgitating what we say later on. So I'm not so, I mean, what we could do is say, we addressed it in these in these, uh, in these sections. So we can just lay that out and say, look, the way we looked at it was, we we broke this down into a couple of sections, but not even give a a a summary about this. Because I think it could be a little bit confusing, because anything that you do as a snippet and you try to compress into a sentence. Maybe, uh, may not be fair to to the the full document. I I really. Like to press up against people who walk around and just determine that life is nothing but true false questions. And, uh, you know, even trying to put this through in a sentence may not be, it may not give it the full full treatment service that we should give. So I would, I I I echo your comments. I think we can make it, uh, a more positive feel. And, uh, I think by doing, by taking away some of these bullets, we could just put a short paragraph and say, we're, we're dealing with these sequentially. And in the document, the number one would be, you know, and by the way, it might also be to your point. By the way, there's no, uh, I don't know if there's a natural order here. Do we, if we start off with processing a land use, that's kind of negative, because we're we're sort of against what was proposed. Do we want to start with something else? Again, order in in presentation do count in terms of, uh, I think flavor and takeaway. So if we want to do that, I think that's, I think that's a good thing. I'm not quite sure the bullets really, uh, serve a really good purpose, because I think. Anything that we try to compress is gonna be, um, it could be taken out of context by someone. You know, this is what they believe. This is their one sentence, and and perhaps it's it's really one section of that. I I don't know how you compress any of these issues, frankly, uh, fairly in, um. In a sentence or two. Leave it to the draft.
I I'm okay with that. You know, I thought the bullets could be helpful, but if they're not.
I I I did too, but I think you raise a very good point, uh, and I think heightened bulk, as soon as you raise that, it's like, wow. Why bother trying to do this, uh, and then have someone say, well, now, this is what they said. Look at this. It's taken directly from their draft, this bullet, which is, you know. Maybe three quarters or half of it, or maybe not. So, um, I think a little outline of how we broke it down. We can, and, uh, we can talk more fully, um, about globally about the goals. Again, I personally like, um, using, uh, the comp plan as a touchstone. How this form-based code is is accomplishing that or trying to incorporate those recommendations. And 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 then, of course, you know, in our text, we'll say, this is what the the attempt was, and we think the consultants in this case should do better. They should do X, Y, Z, or this is, uh, this is counter to what we should do. I mean, that's, in my opinion, the processing is counter to what we would want to do. In my opinion, the processing is counter to what we would want to do. But I'm I'm very um. Very happy to talk, uh, and and perhaps uh, look at this a little bit differently. I don't know what we. You know, what you want to lead with. But I think, I think that's a very good point to make the, the opening, uh, talking more about the goals, echoing the goals. Uh, and and, you know, echoing support for the goals. Um, and those will include some additional terms.
And I, I I I would, I I, you know, I would hesitate to ask us to draft that language here tonight. But I think it would be great, Eldad, if you want to take that on and and have that a paragraph or so, whatever you think is appropriate and and get it back to us. I I would love to take a look at it and see if we can get it in there.
Sure, I'm I'm uh, happy to do that. I mean, you know, I had written a preamble that was then changed, which is fine and had some language like that. I I will, I will. But I I will, I'll make changes to this, but I did want to add one additional point. Um, and that is on the topic now, I and I have spoken about this in the past and and I and I, I know that. I may not, it it may not be a unanimous uh, priority, but just the concept of how. The form based code as proposed does get at um, uh, social justice. As it pertains to exclusionary zoning. That's a topic that's important to me. I think it's a. You know, it, I don't know, uh, if it was part of the. Goals uh, of the comprehensive plan, maybe set in different ways with diversity of housing and all that. It's important. I would love to address that here because I think it is very important. Now, I I'm willing to. Have that be like a side, a parallel paragraph or parallel document. If you don't want it like infused into this document, but that's something that I'd like to write and maybe you all can decide if you want to. Sign on to it um, or not. That's uh, just something I wanted to throw out there. I I don't, I don't necessarily want to get into in depth today. I've talked about it. You know, in the past, um, and how that's sort of an issue that exists in our country. And one that certainly exists in our town, um, the idea of zoning as a barrier and um. And uh, so I think this is, it's important to kind of be on record uh, about it.
So uh, just for for um, uh, yeah, absolutely. Uh, I'm probably not going to sign on to that, but. But please do it and, you know, I'd be happy to learn, you know, from the experience. I I I really want to sort of hesitate to let the comment go. That this town has purposely exclusionary zoning. That was the assumption. That's the the tone of what I took from what you just said. Zoning is in, zoning is fundamental to, obviously, I mean, you know, that's, I mean, you teach this stuff. It's fundamental to to land use policy. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty much. Everything with respect to how you how communities are built and managed and so on and so forth. And uh, there is nothing particular about this town, which is more exclusive, more or less exclusionary than I can think of than. Then, you know, ninety nine percent of the towns in the, in the country. So I would hate to think that you're stigmatized by that comment.
I I don't, I don't disagree at all. That's why I said it's a, it's a problem nationally.
Well, I don't say, I don't think it's a problem. See, that's where you and I will differ.
Right.
Right? So that's fine. It's okay for us to differ. I don't, I don't, I don't think it's a problem and I don't think it's it's useful for you. And I'd love to talk to you about this and debate it with you, but I don't think it's useful to anybody to have that debate right now. Most importantly, it'd be good to get your thoughts out.
Okay, good. And we could also book the uh, the 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 pack for a a debate, you know, once, once people are allowed indoors and. We could sell tickets for charity.
I wouldn't want to be that charity.
All right. So so um, just to wrap on that uh, issue, I'm going to make some general comments or edits to the preamble. To try to make it a little bit more positive. Yes. And separately, I will include a section. Uh, about social justice and inclusionary zoning, and then we all can decide if what we want to do with it, throw it in the garbage or. Have it be as part of the document or, you know, a pendant to the document or whatever.
Very good, very good. Let's see. I don't know whether, Bob, I'm sorry, I'm scrolling through the document, see if I can get to topics that. Do we, do we agree generally on the language that we put in here with regard to the uh, the approval process?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that was a yes for me, not for all of us.
Okay.
Dick, you know, are you okay with it? Okay.
Uh, the town owned land, uh, I think Eldad or maybe it's Kanon, it was you who made the comment that what's missing here is the statement. That in this town owned land section, we don't uh, uh, we don't endorse. Having the form based code applied to the town owned land as well. Is that, is that right?
Consistency.
Yeah, just in the bullet point, we don't say it, but then we do in in the, in the larger section, but if we're getting rid of the bullet points, then then that is a non-issue.
Yeah, mission accomplished, right?
Uh, I'm trying to see where it's, it's said in the town owned land.
Um, it's, it's in um, the uh, sort of the third sentence, third line says, and on balance, we believe that. Inclusion of town owned land in the G I S study and in the F B C can prove to be useful.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Yeah, are we all right with that language?
Well.
With that section?
The E I S, of course, I think is critically important, but the the F B C, you know, fine, but it's not in there anyway because they're they're changing the study, but whatever. We're taught, we're commenting on the code as it's currently presented, so it's fine. I I I, I don't know about that. I want to be careful that we, we don't look like um, the dilettantes and commenting on something that is completely irrelevant also at this. I mean, we've taken our time. So I don't know if it makes any sense to put in the F B C in there. Um, I leave it to you guys.
I mean, if you're talking about a future state, if you're saying, I I almost feel like we do have to take ourselves out of. Just responding to the the code as it was given to us, right? Because we are trying to be slightly prescriptive about. How to solve for getting a better system in place, whether it's the form based code or not, but. So I think that it's okay to to suggest that if it was done correctly, it would be good to be part of the study, but it's not. That's, that's the point we're trying to make here.
Uh, just a point of 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 uh, information. Sabrina, when they decide, the town board had decided to uh, sort of pull in their stakes and. And uh, do the North Greeley area instead of the whole district. Did they, are they suggesting that what they would do is legislate the form based code for North Greeley only?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, but the, the, the environmental review is being written for the entire study area. Yet to be decided how, they're looking at North Greeley as the phase one, if you will. The only thing that will be mapped as a form based district will be the North Greeley area.
So this language here that suggests the inclusion of town owned land in the G I S study. And in the form based code can prove to be useful. They are, they are currently not thinking about having the form based code. Apply to the town owned land. So uh, either I I thought that we would put it in there to be supportive of them, but. Do we really think that, do we really think that having the form based code. On town owned land can be useful, or can it be a, a difficulty? If they decide that they are going to do a further master plan study and come up with a whole new.
There has been no, this town board will not be deciding that. You you know, so I I I think it's up to however your board wants to handle that.
I think it's a good point, Tom, because that's really one of our takeaways on on the town owned, at least this from my perspective. I've been harking on for a while. That um, it 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 calls for a a master plan of of the town owned property for a real study. So by putting in a form based code, perhaps that uh, loads, uh, preloads that study. Perhaps to take it out.
You wouldn't want to, you wouldn't want to encumber the, the effort with. That doesn't apply. And if you, if it turns out you're going to have to rezone anyway. I mean, to do, you know, something that you today can anticipate what the heck it's going to be. It seems to me it would be better if it were, I don't want to say a cleaner slate, but not one. And the other part of it is, is actually political here. And I know it's, that's not our business, but. I think that, that, that the reason that the, I believe, I haven't talked to anybody about this. But I, my, my sense is the reason they're pulling back the North Greeley and and not applying the form based code to the town owned land. Is that that's the, that's the real sort of hot button for the community. And uh, and and so I don't think that we should necessarily be, it would, it's not helpful for us to put in here. That we think the form based code should apply to the town owned land.
Yeah.
Just strike that phrase.
I mean, we should put it on if we think it. Um, but also it sounds like it's a not, it's. It's almost not relevant at the moment.
Exactly.
So I'm okay with striking it. I mean, I think it should be included, but like, I think the town land should be included in the rezoning. But since it sounds like it one hundred percent will not be, and our comments will not be influential. If you guys are uncomfortable or even ambivalent, then I'm okay with striking it.
Okay.
I mean, I do, I do believe that you do need a ton of studies before you include that huge piece of land in the form based code. Like I, I, I do believe that we haven't done the work to get there. So.
And I think the next sentence, uh, I I think it needs to be tweaked because again. I think we should change it from the the form based code process. It's, it's. I think it's really the consultants have not yet provided sufficient guidance. So uh, leave it on them. They're, they're the ones who propose this, I think, uh, without the sufficient. You know, study, um, again prematurely. I I by writing it this way, it almost seems like we're criticizing the town board. I'm getting back to what Eldad was saying. I think these are the kinds of tweaks. That can maybe help with the overall tone. If people are taking this and interpreting this that the planning board is just a bunch of negative dilettantes. That's not good. And and I, and I think to the extent we, we should clean up and look at this language carefully throughout the document. And remind ourselves that this is not the document of the town of Newcastle. It is not. The planning departments. It's not the town boards. It is the consultant's proposal to the town board for consideration. And so this way, you know, uh, we don't have, you know, people calling Sabrina and say, you know, you have some nerve or. People writing on my Christmas cards, are you kidding? Um, that kind of stuff. Um, uh, just, you know. I think it's cleaner and better. I think it's more accurate.
Bob, you should.
Can I take that? Sorry.
Go ahead, Khan.
Can I just take that point a little further, um, where I feel like when we say, you know, it's really. The consultants have not done a, a comprehensive job and we all sort of agree on that. And have let down, as a result, they are not able, you know, the town board is not able to support some of the things that, that this document should. Then we should also sort of, in fact, that's where four or five bullet points on what is it that we expect these consultants to come back with. Right? Um, in terms of economic analysis, in terms of like, how do we, how do we, how do we make sure that? Let's say the next town board wants to go at this problem. How do we equip them to ask the right questions?
Well, I think in this case, it's pretty clear because the sentence before really sets the stage and we say, you have to un undertake a master plan. Now, that may not be the right answer and some of the other issues that you raised, fair enough. But I think here we've done it.
Yes, yes.
And and we've said, look, it's just premature. It's not included right now. You know, this should be subject to a master, a master study, a real Claire study on that. And then I have no recommendations as to who, what, why I should do it. I don't think we have to supply any of that information. We don't have to add footnotes or anything else. Just uh, just make that observation. Which I think we, we all agreed on, um, you know, especially now with the the town board. You know, pulling back on the, on the, on the breadth of the study. It just doesn't make any sense to make a comment about the the F B C in this area, in my opinion.
Yes, and I I meant for all the, all the different points that. About, you know, just getting into that level of like, here's what was missing in the housing statement. Here's what was missing, you know.
Fair enough. I think we should look at that as we go through it. I think looking at the, the language throughout the document with those, um, with Eldad's. Sensitivity toward um, the, the tone um, is important.
I concur.
So do we feel, is the rest of the language okay on the town owned area?
Uh, believe critically important for the town to engage in a master planning process focused on town, on master planning process. Yeah, there it is there. Or potential future use that is consistent with comprehensive plan goal, yada, yada. Should call on the right mix of imagination and hard economics not to be constricted by current short term conditions. Be developed as informed by a long view, public purpose.
What?
What?
What'd you say?
Parking. Well, no, what I was going to say is you ought to send me those Christmas cards because I don't ever get any.
I got quite a few of that. Which continued, contained um, a lot of commentary. Oh, well, whatever. It's just another perk.
Parking remains a critical concern and a difficult constraint. I think what we're saying in here is that it's, it's really. Unfortunately, in the suburbs, it's always a fulcrum issue. And that we're concerned that the uh, consultants, I think it'll be put in here as the consultant's parking toolbox. Right? Strategies are not, um, they're, they're not, not really convincing for our town. That there are parts of, about it, like remote parking lots, so on and so forth, that just don't seem to be realistic. And that um, these things ought to be looked at again.
Yeah, and and uh, just a little context, uh, and I think Tom and and Sabrina, you'll agree. It was very interesting when we had our committee meetings that behind the scenes afterwards, it may have been different, but during the committee uh, meetings, unfortunately. Uh, the parking expert, who was a very, very likable fellow, really nice guy. Uh, always seemed to be at the end of the meeting and was given, uh, you know, his agenda was squeezed until about four minutes. And people were getting up, getting their coffee and and going to the bathroom, et cetera. And this poor guy really, I think, never got to explain his toolbox. And the suppositions behind it. There were a couple of people, like I said, including myself probably. And I don't believe these assumptions. And then the poor guy, uh, well, okay, the next meeting will be eleven o'clock a week from today. And the poor guy was always at the end. And I don't think it was ever really, I know the committee really never got to uh, look at this, explore these. And then they were kind of dumped there. It was really unfortunate because I thought he was a really sharp guy, smart guy, nice guy. And the poor guy was just squeezed into the last few minutes consistently. And I don't think we had the full benefit. Uh, and he was, he was not a guy who said, this is just it. He told us that these are suppositions. And he said, you don't have to stay with these. But this is why I was thinking that you might want to look at these. And he was doing it with a strategy, but we never got to really talk to him. It was really a shame.
Yeah, I think that part of the problem was we, that he, he, he delivered this menu of different ways in which you could sort of. You know, have devote less land to parking essentially, uh, which is something we always want to do.
Sure.
And the, it's less land in your, in the heart of your downtown to parking. And he came up and he had this remote parking and all these other things. Came up with, with stackers. He said, you know, you can use stackers. So he, he presented this menu and then. The consultants just sort of picked from the menu and threw it into the, this is my interpretation, sort of picked from the menu, threw it in the form based code. And they, and like Bob says, it never really got the level of analysis that, that it deserved and um.
Or just discussion.
There's some things that survive that uh, the form based code, like. Remote parking, which I I think uh, just really caused one to, to ask again, does that really sort of make sense?
Yeah.
It's a, it again, unfortunately, it's a fulcrum issue and it, it would, it. To me, it's something that you, you, you have to, you really have to understand the parking in order to understand the land value. In order to understand the development density, in order to understand all of those things in the specific context of the train station. And people driving to it and all those other things. And that's as much a density driver determinant. As anything. And I just feel like it wasn't um, wasn't really uh, completely analyzed. And the way to get at it is to, is to question.
Right.
You know, do these strategies make sense?
Right. I mean, unfortunately, those meetings were really monopolized by the lawyers. So if the lawyers can. So if the lawyers can back out of the parking issue for a while, we might make some headway and uh, talk about some uh, substantive issues. But anyway, different issue. So are we okay with the language though? I mean, uh, I like that word fulcrum. Does it appear in here, Tom?
Uh, what language?
I like that the word fulcrum issue. I mean, that's really uh, critical. It it should be introduced in here somewhere. So I like that and I and I think um. I I think the bottom line on the parking was suppositions were made, these were models, um, and I I I wasn't. I didn't think that the stacking would go that far, but it was. There were certain suppositions made with regard to the number of spots that were going to be necessary for certain kinds of occupancies and. And there was some issue as to whether or not uh, those would be accurate up here or not. Uh, we did get some word that some of these were used, for example, down in Bronxville. Um, there was some thought that uh, that was at least partially successful. So I think we never unfortunately got to look at those suppositions more and more detail and discuss those. And I think that's what we need here to support whatever we we come up with, whatever the town board comes up with, whatever we come up with as a community. For what we think is important for parking, because it really is critical. I mean, without parking. It is not gonna work. So a couple little tweaks to it, but we 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 feel we're pretty close then on on parking, just recommending that we, um. You know, it it we just need some more uh, peeling of the onion to see what was really behind the suppositions and questioning those and. And seeing if there are other alternatives out there.
So um, if not, or if so, or I don't know which side with the right, but architectural style. Uh, I just was rereading this and it gets a little bit. Esoteric. I I just wonder if this uh, language could be uh. Trimmed down quite a bit. Um.
Yeah.
I'm I'm trying to make a point here, which, you know, being an architect, that is one that I am just yearning to make. But uh, that's just my personal thing, uh, and so if Canaan wants to slap my wrist, I. I've had it, uh, but I'm gonna.
I think I agree with you and the whole, you know, and there's a lot of things we agree on here. Uh, it it is ridiculous to start describing. What it's gonna look like before you decide, so um, I'm happy to look at it and and edit it.
Good.
Inscribing or priest uh, or.
Yes, thank you, Dick. Yes.
Things that you're allowed and pro are things that are not allowed, right?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, you gotta watch out about double negatives also with that.
Yep. So I think I think it can really be trimmed. Uh, again, this is a document, uh, now I'm gonna. Point back to Dick on this because Dick is always a believer that once we go past half a page, it's way too long a document. So um, I think.
I just wanna say, I just wanna say, Dick, it's so great to have you back. I've missed my grammar mama.
But I think we should trim this down as much as possible and and get to the point. I in this document, again, uh, Tom, if you wanna, you know.
Yeah.
So like Eldad, join in with something separate and and just.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have comments on, you know, the uh.
But I'll get too direct then.
That I will send to everybody on minor ones, but on uh. Uh, Canaan's work, I I see, listening to everything, I see other things that. That could be added with with a couple of sentences to make it more strong as to what we're thinking. Uh, and and reasonable, and I'll present those to, I know, I guess, to Felicia.
Yes.
And then she'll send them to everyone, or I should send them to everyone.
If I may recommend, if I may recommend, I I think, you know, if everybody could take this document that you received in Word. Track your changes to the document and send it back to myself and Felicia. We will compile a completely tracked document with everyone's comments. Document and a clean copy of that document, right? Where where we can make it clean, if you will. Um, and um, that way you will have a completely tracked change document to review and finalize the next time you meet.
Yes, please. Thank you. Yes, please, and thank you.
However, let's talk about schedule. And when you wonderful people feel you will be able to make your track changes and get it back to us.
Yes, yes.
No more than six months.
Yeah, right. You know, the longer it is it goes, I think people just forget that we have these deadlines, so um. Uh, we have to be cognizant of those. And uh, thank you, Felicia, for sending out reminders to uh, to prod us also. Um, obviously, you've worked with us before, so you know what what is necessary. Um, so uh, we can talk about that. Well, why don't we, why don't we finish up the substance of the documents and then we'll talk about scheduling and and um, I, you know, uh, and 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 go from there. So so architectural, we agree that will tighten this up. And if um, the Tommy wanna write something separate, um, you know, uh, and we'll just put a footnote and just say that's that's Tom.
No, I I won't embarrass you guys by association. But uh.
Street, isn't it?
Uh. Uh, if we want to get, uh, maybe we don't need to get back to this, but I think we do, uh, height and bulk, I mean.
Oh, yeah. Like, oh, absolutely. Yes, yes.
And this is, this is actually where I just reread this, uh, and this is where that word fulcrum is used, so I wouldn't want to use it in parking, because I think that this really is probably the. Personally, I think this really is the fulcrum issue that that uh, most people are reacting to. Uh, I think that um. The Eldad quite rightly um, perceived it as uh, really boiling it down to a density issue. Uh, and I think that's that's correct, that it is. Uh, and I believe that uh, Eldad, don't let me um. Mistate your feelings about this, but I believe you think that that uh, I'm gonna say it wrong, but. That density in the interest of solving or perceived to be the uh. Coming up with a better, a vision for a better hamlet, that density is your is your friend. Uh, that that's how you can solve a lot of the things that it's in in that it's embedded in the density opportunity. Um, I think that that personally, I think that. That's that's literally true, uh, but it's not necessarily situationally true. And uh, I mean, I'm a fan, I'm an urbanist. I've, you know, designed cities all over hell and back. But I don't think that it, I think that in every case, context is the is the first priority in any in any. Fine problem. And to me, the context of the hamlet and its its popular physical context. And the people who live here and their aspirations in moving here and their their ways in which they use the hamlet and all those things. Are are of primary importance. And then density needs to be looked at in that context. And I'm not saying you aren't looking at in that context, Eldad. But I guess I'm suggesting that maybe we're coming to different conclusions about that.
Uh, so I don't have any tattoos, but if I did, density is your friend might be my first one. Um, I. I um, yeah, I mean, I I I don't disagree with you. Uh, we we probably differ a little bit. Um. Uh, I definitely don't think density, you know, is the is like a one size fits all solution and and, you know, obviously I think there are limits. Uh, that makes sense for this town. Um. And we just may disagree where those are. I I I don't hate the language in in um, in height and bulk here, um. Because it ends with a a series of questions. Um, I don't think that we're being prescriptive. Um. Uh. Very prescriptive here, which is fine. Um, you know, the word bucolic appears here. I've joked several times that every time there's a public hearing on this, I I um. I play a drinking game where I take a shot every time someone says the word bucolic. Uh, I'm a lightweight and so I'm out, a couple, a couple callers in. Um, bucolic doesn't mean, I think, but what the. What people means, I I've looked the word up, it's like pastoral, I mean, it may be like. It's rolling hills, you know, our downtown is not bucolic today, it won't be bucolic tomorrow. Um, but in general, I'm comfortable with the heightened bulk language because, like I said, it ends with questions as opposed to answers. Um, and uh, we may not, if if we are prescriptive on this, we're, I I doubt we'll agree. Um, and that's okay also.
So just in defense of uh, using the word bucolic, I use it as quotes because it is in the comp plan. I agree with you that it means it means nothing.
Well, I will tell you something, get it in context.
But it means a lot to some people. It means a lot to a lot of people.
In context for Eldad and and Canaan, Sabrina, how many hours do you think we spent on the word bucolic on the comp plan? It was definitely double figures.
I never want to hear that word again.
We, you cannot believe how many hours were spent on that word.
Yeah.
And when we, when we concluded, we knew it was defective, but that's what we used. It was as close as we could get. That was the consensus. That was something.
Wow.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so in that there are these uh, bullets, you know.
I like those bullets. I mean, they are asking the right questions. That's.
I agree.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe that's that's a, maybe that's a format we could use for the housing question.
Yeah.
If you want to use that format to post up, you know, what you think are the right questions to be asking, and we could do that for, we could do it for each.
Each one.
Parking.
That's, that sounds really good, because I think then it's sort of telling them, here's the answers to go find.
Yes.
Yeah, I like that.
Good, okay.
Um, can I just, I I I may have spaced out entirely, but I, did we skip over the retail section?
We did. I didn't space out, not entirely, but uh, we did skip it.
Okay.
So uh, I didn't do anything to retail section just because I got burned out.
Yeah.
Um, but and I assume that, you know, somebody else would pick up the baton, but let's pick up the baton now.
So so I I like it. It's short. I mean, the only thing I've written here is um, flexibility is king, um, and and we we do mention. That's my second tattoo. That's exactly right. Um, and so uh, could, because I like it. I think the whole concept of the form based code, which I support uh, conceptually. Um, it, you know, creates this form and allows us to be flexible and in time of uh, COVID and it and it planning for post-COVID, hopefully. Um, we don't know, I mean, I don't know anything. Uh, I don't think anyone knows what the. Future holds for commuting or office or work or any of that. So the ability to to have flexibility of use, I think, is important. And I think this language talks a little bit about that. Um, all I wrote, like I say, I I I put a check mark because I like it and then I wrote flexibility is king, but we already have greater flexibility here and and so um.
Well, we we could lead with this section and, you know, to your point about having a tone that is positive. We could lead with a section and say one of the most important functions of the form based code. Is to leave, uh, is to not regulate uh, use. And it really to set up form. I mean, that's one of the keys of of the form based code. And this is where it, this is where it really hits the road here, uh, is in this retail flexibility. Or how or whatever we do flexibility here.
Bob, Bob.
Can I put on my architect hat for a second?
Yes.
Say that there are problems to this, uh, and we need to answer them. Because if you're gonna say it needs to be flexible space, I mean, this is, you know, there's there's conversations about. These massive office plates in the city not now falling weakened and talking about bringing in affordable housing and housing in there and all of that. And the conversation is like, how do you make it work, right? And I think there is a. There is a real, there's a real, there's a reason why the plates are a certain size and. If we move away from there, and maybe it's just a question, it's one of those bullet point questions to talk about. Flexible retail space that can be converted to X, Y, Z uses or, you know, looking at. Flexible floor plates so that as a concept that needs to be explored. I just think, again, if we can be more prescriptive there, it would be helpful. Only because it's not a given, it's really not a given, that you can walk away from retail. And build housing or, you know, you can take a retail space or you can take an office space and then. I mean, we're talking about office parks across Westchester, which have the same problem. It's like, we're talking about how do you, what do you suddenly in like, we need housing here, can we put housing in here instead of those office plates? Um, and it's not, it's not that easy. And. I don't know how we put that in, but I think we should, we should ask those questions to be answered.
Those could be bullet questions at the end.
Yeah.
I think those would be perfect.
Well, the the the, yes, bullet, we ought to bullet point these 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 uh, these observations, absolutely. And and. The 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 primary thing that. That it's easy to forget um, in our culture, and I believe from my experience in. More mature cultures, uh, as in Europe, for example. Um, we forget that the buildings we use, the cities we inhabit, we're just borrowing. And they are gonna get reused and reused and reused over and over again. And and they're gonna get reused for new purposes. And as a consequence, the 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 physical frame, uh, not just the streets and the blocks, but the. You know, the buildings and the the what's on the front of the building and the size of the floor plate as. As Canaan is pointing out. All way in on the potential uh, positive or or encumbrance of the reuse. And um, this gets to the architectural standards that are in this document. Because in my experience, I've had uh, developers. Walk away from buildings and walk away from districts, whole districts, because. It's full of floor plates and building configurations which are just of no use to them. And you you end up with actually neighborhoods which become disinvested in just because the physical infrastructure of the place. Is difficult, uh, is is difficult to to reuse in any in any uh, purposeful way. So this comment, I think, also can get back to, and I maybe we already have it in there. But the notion that you are going to have a a, I I don't know, a Italianate. Uh, front which has, you know, windows at a specified residential pattern, those are residential patterns. And that the ground floor is gonna be uh, assembled in a particular way with demising walls. I mean, I I if you if if it's the, if the purpose is to get people to come in and to revitalize the hamlet, it it seems to me in. In some significant ways, you may actually be frustrating that purpose.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, so the the thing that I would add there is, you know, uh, just the examples of, of course, we don't face it here, but. I, having seen that happen where old mill buildings are converted to housing or uh, it takes a lot of. Effort. It's not easy to convert those buildings. And so. Is there a way for us to think about retail floor plates in a way that it is? You, it is something we can utilize for different purposes. And maybe. Maybe it is possible, given, I mean, I'm not even talking about a facade, right? Like, I'm just talking about something as basic as. How am I going to move around if this is a residential space versus? It's a commercial space because the light and ventilation requirements are different. And right there, most of these large sort of bigger plates have an issue, which may not be the case in our town, but it's just definitely something we should. Look at when we talk about flexibility.
Well, and one of the reasons I I I wrote some of this, uh, this thing was, um. Sabrina, as I recall, there was something in the form based code about giving some flexibility, but on a limited uh, timeframe. Were developers who found that they couldn't get the space occupied for retail on a ground floor, but they would have a certain amount of time. To uh, use residential uh, temporarily. And I think, as I recall. A good deal of the code dealt with the first floor. We spent a lot of time about uh, the height of the first floor, what it should be, sixteen feet, four fourteen feet, twelve feet. Again, anticipating retail, so Canaan, to your point, um, should we, should that not be uh, prescribed to that to that the degree? Uh, is it good to do? I don't know.
I mean, if I was living in, if I if I were living in an apartment that had sixteen feet high. Floors, I mean, that's that's a plus for the person living there, right? Like, it's it's the, you can make it work for you. Well, it's it's the other way that wouldn't work if you were to have a very, uh, you know, if you'd have a ten feet or a twelve feet. Uh, high uh, first floor, then it'd be harder for you to put retail in. So it's almost like those are the considerations to make. And then I don't think we would get into this issue, but if we were. Providing large office plates for some reason, then converting that to housing would be almost impossible. Um, I mean, not impossible, but very hard, let's just say. Um, so those are the kind of things that. We, the the designer who would come in has to think about that, well, this could be retail today, it could be housing tomorrow. It really needs to be um, possible to do both. And how is it gonna work in terms of access, in terms of parking, in terms of like, if it's what kind of retail it is, all of that. I mean. Retail has all these other requirements.
Right. So the 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 large, large floor.
Another, another thing that is is gonna surface very quickly is. Well, another, another thing that is, is going to surface very quickly is uh, President Biden's approach to fair housing. And with all the rules that would go with that. So there's a whole bunch of, of things that are going to happen there that are going to make this whole exercise we're going through somewhat more difficult. You know, and that's, I don't know what to do about that at all.
Yeah. What are, why are we bothering in all of this? Right?
No, I, I mean, we are addressing some of the points, you know, I mean, the talk about zoning, inclusionary zoning that Eldad was talking about. I mean, there is, there is, let's just say, there is movement in that direction. The winds are blowing in that direction. The, the problem with what we are trying to do here is, are we providing a prescriptive information one way or the other? Or is it, you know, to what, to what extent is it opinion and to what extent it is policy? And, you know, that's, that's the difficulty that we are all sort of running into, right? We all have the, these intentions to to give po- give, give some muscle to the policy that we hope to prescribe, proscribe.
Right.
I think pre-scribe, yes. Prescription. You know, do a prescription, you get something, right?
There you go.
You do a prescription, you get nothing.
Our grandma, our grandma mama, actually he's our grandma grandmama. So um, the, the, in, in particular, uh, as applies to the form based code and the hamlet, right? Uh, there are, with exception of the town on land, there are no large floor plate options, right? Because it's just not right? And, and actually, part of that, one of those parking lots is zoned for largely, large plate office development. Uh, and, and that's, uh, let's see, I think it's, it's, I, I forget the designation of the zone, but it's zoned for that. But for the rest of it, the, the, you know, the, the parts, uh, which I, which are, for instance, part of all, all of North Greeley and South Greeley, uh, it's, it's right, smaller floor plates. So that, and the, the, one of the, the concerns that we had at Chappaqua Crossing. It was put in the zoning there, in the uh, in, in the, the stipulations for the developer that he had to have shops of certain sizes. And we limited the shops into, to different size categories. And there were various reasons for that. But what was interesting, um, you know, small shops, some 1,500 square feet, some bigger, and obviously there's the Whole Foods. One reason for, one, one consequence of what he did, which is very interesting, is if you go there and actually look at the, at the, at that, that build, that you've been there, that bulk of shops, and you look in the window, he's got very high ceilings in there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, he could, he could slip another floor in there, easy, easy, right? Which is fine. I think that's great. You know, put a dentist's office upstairs, anything that, you know, gets more people there. But um, one of the things that, that I wanted to do, uh, just personally, was that there is a slope to the street. And that I wanted to, one of the things that, that happens in redeveloped neighborhoods where you, you, a developer comes in, takes a block, puts a big office building or a big residential building up and takes out all of the row houses that were there that had shops and on the ground floor, is that all of those small shops go away. The neighborhood disappears because all those shops go away. And you end up with a big floor plate that has a bank or a, or a TJ Maxx or, you know, a big floor plate user in there. And it's a neighborhood killer. And so one of the, one of the things that, that, you know, you sort of want to be careful of is you don't end up with a block in Chappaqua, which is, you know, six storefronts of one store. I mean, that would be, I think, contrary to the notion of walkability and vitality and interest and all those other things. So I think it's not only a question of, of the height of the floor plate and for the size of the floor plates, the height, I don't think it's going to be a problem. I think it's more for the, you know, the, the breadth of the floor plate and, you know, what happens there. I don't think that we want to get in the business of regulating that, but I think it, it is part of the form, you know, the, the calculation that goes into what makes, you know, a street, a street.
Yeah. So what we are saying is that if we want to be supportive of small shops and small stores, the, the floor plate should be reflective of that. And I think it actually works because what, what we're saying is there are no, there is no scope to put very large plates. And then the second is that, that's great because now you can put other uses in there. Um, if they're a little higher or not, you know, that can work.
So how about if I take on, I take on the bullets for this particular category?
The question? Sure. That'd be great.
And uh, Eldad, Eldad's going to take a shot at the preamble.
Yep.
Canad's going to do bullets for the housing thing.
Sure.
Uh, that'd be great. Uh, anybody want to pick up the parking bullets?
Yeah, I'll pick those up. Sure. I'll take it. Yep. Take a look at it.
And I'm going to do miscellaneous stuff.
You're going to correct our grammar and uh, our words. So we're going to use a prescribed like I did before, yes.
And I'm, I'm gonna, I'm going to clean up the architectural uh, style nonsense.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yep. Good. I think, look at this. We actually have a plan. Almost sounds like a planning board. We have a plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wants a date. Sabrina's like, where's the date?
When's the time? When are you getting it to me?
Okay, well, let's see. So today's what, the 15th, right? Uh, we have a meeting on
I want to know when to book the uh, the meeting.
Yeah. So we have uh, we have a planning board meeting next week, right? The 20th.
Correct.
Can we get the comments in by next Thursday, the 22nd?
Yes.
Sure.
Right, one week? One week?
That's aggressive, folks. Can you do it?
I think it's better if it's fresh in our minds rather than trying to remember 10 days later, like uh, who said what? And then
So my C O B on the 22nd.
Yep.
So Sabrina, you are absolutely not of the opinion that I should convert this to the, the, to a Google Doc and circulate it. Okay.
No, no, please, no, Canaan.
Okay.
It could cause termination from the plating board.
All right. Okay. I will stick to word then.
Can I, we have a lot to digest tonight. We have two, two tattoos on Eldad. We're working with that.
And, and they say Eldad, once you get one, you can't stop.
All right.
Hmm. All right. So on the 22nd, when is the next time you would like to meet to discuss this, the final draft?
You want to do it the next, the, the next week, uh, the 29th?
Sure.
I, I'm s- I'm sorry. I, I am unavailable on the 29th. Um, although if you guys want to go ahead without me, maybe
What I'm, what I'm going to say is it may be tough with everything that we're dealing with in my office to do it on the 29th because for each meeting, we have things to do in my office for you. Um, so if we could push it out to
The 6th. May 6th.
Yeah, May 6th.
Wait, wait, wait. Can I just ask, wait a minute, what are we? Uh, I mean, what are we going to be doing to this document? There's going to be a little bit of a rewrite. Somebody's going to be adding some bullets. There might be a tone change, which I, I completely uh, uh, support. So what takes two weeks?
Uh, only that, the, the, the department really needs another week, uh, just for all the other things going on is what we're hearing from Sabrina. So
Yeah, we're, we're slammed right now.
So if we get our stuff in by the 22nd, they have to work, uh, rework the draft during the week of
We have to combine everything. We have to combine everything. And to be quite honest with you, I think uh, Jen Gray would, would like to see it as well.
Okay, I, I've just astonished. I mean, if that's what it takes, that, that's what it takes.
If you want to meet on the 3rd instead of the 6th, I'm happy to accommodate that.
Yeah, so I am. I don't care. I mean, I care. I think it, I, my frustration is this has been going on for months.
Sure.
Can we, can we maybe then just
Let me just finish. Every time we try and do something, it's two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, a month out. And then it turns out that not everybody has done, you know, their homework and what they're supposed to do. And then we're two, then we're doing two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, a month out again. I just get the feeling that it's like a never ending story.
Yep.
And we maybe then just uh, tack this on to the end of the, of the May 4th um, meeting that we have?
Yeah, why not?
Sure.
That's a good idea.
Do we have, do we know what that agenda looks like, Sabrina? No, it's too, it's too far out, right?
But to be quite honest with you, you haven't had a lot on your agendas.
Right, right.
And with any luck, there won't be much more to do with this document.
Yes. Good point.
Yeah, that's my point. That's, that's exactly my point. So
We can pick up a few days by doing it on the 4th, if that works with the agenda.
I think that, well,
What day?
May 4th, our, our regular Tuesday night, meeting night.
May 4th?
Yep. Which is a, a, a regular meeting. Will this be part of the agenda for May 4th?
We'll put it on as a work session at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, great.
With the goal of wrapping it up in a short amount of time.
Or maybe wrapping it up that night. So
Yeah, I, I mean, ideally wrapping it up that night.
No, that's what I meant by a short amount of time that night.
Yep. But we really have to, everyone, you've really got to get your stuff in and really come through for us on the 22nd, uh, with the changes.
And we will, the Friday before the meeting, send you a, a fully tracked and clean copy if you all review that. Um, and are
In word perfect, right?
In word.
Nah, just a joke, just a joke.
Okay, so what, what's, what's on, what's on the agenda for the, for the 22nd?
You're going to submit
All drafts, all these corrections, uh, that have been assigned to people have to be into uh, Felicia by the close of business on April 22nd.
And what's, we have a meeting on the, the planning board meeting on the 20th.
Correct.
What's on that agenda?
Uh, big stuff, actually. We have uh, Chappaqua Crossing, right, Sabrina?
Yes. You have chat, you have Chappaqua Crossing, you have um, resolution. You have two public hearings, one for Chappaqua Crossing, one for King Fisher. You have two resolutions to consider. Um, actually, three resolutions to consider because you have the East Village site plant subdivision and site plan. And then you have a new application. There's a couple of time extensions and you'll have a couple sets of minutes.
Am I sorry?
The resolutions are going to be important because they're Chappaqua Crossing. We really have to go through those.
Yeah, no, uh, yeah, absolutely. Okay.
And they're in legal hands right now. You should be getting an email tomorrow, Friday, in preparation of your meeting with all of the necessary documentation.
So I want to um, to um, in, in my uh, last look at this, uh, what I'm going to do is um, I'm going to uh, be sure that we are careful in our um, our tone about this. Because the things that we are talking about actually are criticisms of the document. And again, it's the consultant's document. And I want to be sure that we uh, get the message out that we are extremely supportive of the, of the effort. So taking Eldad's um, Eldad's uh, point to heart, I think we should all take that approach. And I think that that would be a very, very positive thing.
Yep, good.
Can I ask um, one, one more, uh, just unrelated thing before we uh, sign off?
Sure.
Uh, there was a, in, in article in uh, Lohud or, or the, the journal, whatever it's called, uh, lohud.com about um, the, the form based code effort. I don't know if you guys saw that article.
What, I, I, I heard about it. I didn't see it. I get Lohud, but I didn't see it. When, when did that appear? Do you recall what day it was, Eldad?
I, I don't know. I, I
Yesterday.
Oh, it was yesterday's. Okay. Huh, I didn't see it.
And so my, it's an interesting article. I, I don't, I actually don't love the tone of that article either. But um, a, a topic for another uh, day. But um, it does mention that the school board uh, has this uh, property that it's developing. Is that something that was before this planning board?
Yes, for many years.
Um, can someone like just point me toward, I'd love to know more about that.
Called the, it's, you can get to the information by searching on the town website under agendas and minute with selecting planning board. It's called the button hook subdivision.
Button hook, okay. How, how old is that?
Eldad, if you want, because this isn't on your agenda, um, you know, I'd love to, I can answer your questions offline.
Okay. A couple of years ago. Last we saw it.
Yep.
Okay. Um, awesome.
Great.
All right.
All right. Uh, very good. Well, I guess we can conclude. Jennifer, Nick owes you a big one for having to sit for us, listen to us. So, yes, exactly. Payback, payback, right? It'll, it'll happen.
Yeah.
In the event, uh, anything else? Uh, anything else? If not, is there a motion to close our meeting?
Still moved.
Second?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.